Good morning. I'll go ahead and call to, uh, call to order the meeting for Monday, September 19th, 2022. If you would please stand and join me with the, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Up first is the approval of the memorandum of the September 6th, 2022, regular town council meeting, a copy has been posted. Are there any questions or comments from councillors?
I'll make a motion to approve.
First by councillor Garrett.
Second.
Second by Vice President Burke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, six in favor, zero opposed. Up next is the approval of the September 19th, 2022 claims. Are there any questions or comments from councillors?
Make a motion to approve.
First by councillor Trailer.
Second.
Second by councillor Melton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, six in favor, zero opposed. Up next is a request to speak on agenda items. Amy, do we have any requests to speak?
No, we do not.
Very good. And up next would be a mayor and administration update. I see the mayor's here. Good morning.
This morning, I am very pleased to report that we have hired a community and economic development director, Mike Dale. After an extensive search, we are thrilled to welcome Mike to our team. With more than 30 years of planning experience in municipal and county government, Mike is a highly accomplished director. He will bring innovation and expertise to the department's vision for our community while administering the wide variety of regulations that exist in the planning world. We are eager to get your feedback on the financial system RFP document that Kelly sent to you all via email last week. We are ready to solicit proposals for a new financial system. Given the consensus we share over the need to replace our current financial system, I hope we can agree to work diligently towards finding a replacement as quickly as possible. I am wondering when you will be ready to update our community on the council's redistricting process. As I'm sure you are aware, the town council districts must be reevaluated based on population growth before the end of 2022. This means that each town council district must be reviewed to determine if they are apportioned as equally as possible. Our team has reviewed census data and determined that the resident population within each current council district does not currently meet that threshold. While I'm sure Heather has brought you up to speed on the requirements and process involved with redistricting, I want to make sure our residents understand the process as well and have an opportunity to participate. If you have drafted a plan for when you will begin the engagement process with the community on this topic, please let us know. We would love to be able to share this information with our constituents. There are a few other items that need to be accomplished by the end of the year. An updated investment resolution and a surplus resolution. As you know, the town has an obligation to review and reauthorize the policy for investment of public funds. It is our understanding that Heather is preparing the town's updated investment resolution. Our team will prepare and present an updated surplus resolution for your consideration before the end of this year. Now, I have a really terrific, um, closing. This is the letter, or an email, from several residents in our town. Hello, Emily. My wife and I are new residents of Zionsville. Thank you for the welcome card. We live in the Ravinia subdivision and everyone has been very friendly and welcoming. We moved from Avon to be closer to a daughter and family who live in Whitestown. There was a sinkhole in the front yard of our new residence. I called the city engineer's office and received immediate attention. Within one day, employees of stormwater and wastewater departments had the sinkhole repaired and our yard restored. Many thanks to Steve Parker, stormwater technician, Bobby Knox, stormwater technician, and Danny Stockstill, the wastewater division supervisor, and the other workers who provided, who provided an outstanding service. They are all outstanding workers for our community. So I hope you will join me in thanking these terrific employees for their, um, their great work and service every day. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Mayor. I had a couple of questions. Uh, you mentioned redistricting. We keep asking for an update for any of open gov. When will we get that?
I, um, think that what we have talked about is discussing things in an executive session due to legal, legal issues.
I think every time you say that, our lawyer says that it doesn't meet the standard for an executive session.
Yes. I am not going to discuss something that is open, that is a current legal issue in a public setting.
There, so there is a current open legal issue?
I think that from the moment we involved attorneys in discussing how we move forward, it became a legal issue.
You involve attorneys on everything.
So I don't have a discussion for you with regard to open gov this morning, Josh.
Are you planning to have one?
No, I'm not planning to have one anytime soon.
So.
We are looking forward to bringing forward a new provider for you all to approve. That is the next step. And that provider.
Somebody's gonna forget everything.
And that provider was the same provider we used in the past. No, we're not gonna forget everything. We're doing everything we can to unwind, um, the situation we're in now and to get our finance team the system that they need to continue to move forward. And I am sure that given your passion for this subject as well, you will not hinder moving forward with that next, that replacement of a financial system.
I don't know what's going on right now because you won't tell us, because you won't give us updates.
We've said, we've actually said to you that we have done an RFP. We are in the process of that. We're working.
The current system, because you keep saying you want an executive session. We keep saying we can't have one. And now at least you're telling us you're not going to provide us any update. So.
I would, I would just say real quick, if we are, if there is pending litigation or a threat of litigation, and you tell us right now, I'll call an executive session immediately. We just need to know that we're, we're gonna sue them or they're suing us.
I'm happy to speak with you, Jason, outside of a public meeting.
Jason, after that, could you perhaps update the council and the public as to what's going on if there's no pending litigation?
I realize that this financial system is a really big draw for you all, but right now, what we're working on doing is moving forward. And that involves getting a new system and moving away from open gov. I, that is a very clear statement. And the, what's, you know, what's behind that, I think we all can say, what's behind that is a failure to deliver reports. Period. And we are moving forward with a new system that will provide us with the reporting that we need and the confidence that we need in terms of our financial system. And I'm sure you will not hold that up moving forward.
So you say failure to deliver reports. There was a state board of accounts report on WISH TV last week that President Plunkett did. You didn't respond to their, to their interview request, but you did give a statement that said, after implementation, the town became aware that the software firm had not developed necessary Indiana regulatory and statutory reports. Do you not feel that would be an important thing to tell the fiscal body that the financial system you chose can't actually report back to the state we live in?
In a public setting? No, I don't feel like I needed to tell you that.
But in a private setting?
I have reported, um, on several occasions, the frustration with reports. That isn't a secret.
So you're saying you have said, there's just been any frustration on reports and inability to actually deliver reports. And I have not been a part of that conversation. Does anyone here have that conversation that we have not been able at all to deliver?
We have reported, we have provided reports. They're just not in the same format that we are accustomed to. Those are two different things.
Indiana regulatory, that's not a, it's not like a formatting issue. Like, we were unable, and the state board of accounts confirmed this.
Yes.
But you are, in your statement, clearly were aware of this and chose not to give us any information on that. So I guess it just leads me to believe is, what are all the other things that you are not telling us because you just don't seem to want to communicate with us, including your statements today? But what's happened with open gov? It's hard to have a relationship when you won't communicate problems.
Yes, it is hard to have a relationship.
Oh, I agree. I don't think it's gonna get any better.
We had, uh, over a year of not getting any financial reports. And we couldn't get an answer as to why. You could have said, we can't produce the reports because of open gov. You didn't say that. The, the first time you mentioned that open gov was not gonna work was after we had said, hey, we're gonna have to do a financial audit. And we took a vote up here to, to implement that or to ask the state board of accounts to do so. That was the trigger for you to actually tell us something.
I think that is your perspective. That is not mine. And I appreciate you stating that in a public meeting. I don't.
We can go back and look at the, look at the videos. I mean, these things are all recorded.
Yes, there are other conversations that take place outside of this public meeting.
All right. So I, I think, I think there's, uh, significant frustration from the council, obviously from the mayor as well. I would say this, if, if the mayor communicates with me today that we are initiating litigation, or that they are initiating litigation against us, we'll hold an executive session.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
If not, I'm gonna keep asking for this information.
If not, if not, I, I, I get it. I just think that, um, these questions are valid questions, valid concerns that we've all had for a long time. Um, and if we can call an executive session and qualify under the statute for executive session, we'll call one and we'll get information.
And in the meantime, are we all on board that moving forward with a new system is a good idea?
Yeah, I have a question about that. So we sent, you're, you're preparing to send out a request for proposal, but you've kind of just insinuated that you already picked a financial system to go with.
We went through a process.
I'm confused by that. So.
We went through a process of evaluating, um.
It's the request for proposal, right?
Well, we went through, we went through a process that was not a formal RFP. What, what we did is we reached out to all of the clerk treasurers and other financial people across the state of Indiana and went through AIM and asked them, who do you use currently for your financial, um, management system? And, and what, you know, are you pleased with them? We overwhelmingly received two vendors as their primary people that, the primary vendors that use, um, that provide financial services through reporting for cities and towns. Those two entities, we brought them in and we asked them to share information about what they, um, we told them a little bit about our circumstances and how they would work with us. And we went through a diligent process through that, through that effort. It was not a formal RFP. After we presented this information to several of you, um, not in a public meeting, we were told we needed to do an actual formal RFP. So now we are going back and we're doing that. And I expect that we will get.
So, so is that for, is that for show? Because you've already picked one? I mean, you said two.
We are doing it based on the, the request by the council to hold an, an actual RFP. It will get us, I think it will yield the same, um, participants as we did in our unofficial sort of process. Um, and at that point, we will choose between.
I, I hope, I hope one of those firms doesn't even spend the time to do it because you've already said you've picked the one that we had previously. I mean, you just said that on the microphone just three minutes ago. So is it a true RFP? Are we really requesting proposals?
We are. We really are.
For multiple companies?
Mm-hmm.
And they all have a similar chance to, to get that work?
They sure do.
No, they don't. There's zero chance. You just, you just said who we're going to.
When you do an RFP, if they come in and someone comes in lower, then that's a, that's a process. That's part of the process. And it actually gets evaluated. We are.
Comes in lower, what way? Price wise?
If, if in the RFP, by doing an RFP, the only advantage to moving forward with this RFP that you all have required after we told you we had gone through the process.
The state requires it, Mayor. We're not requiring.
No, it doesn't. It does not require this for, um, this particular piece. That is not a state requirement. You are wrong about that. And, but if, the one advantage for us doing it at this point is we may end up with a better price. That's the only advantage.
So Heather has, uh, the RFP that she's been reviewing and, and been communicating with the mayor's legal team on, um, what we would like, because it relates to the specific details of the RFP. To your point, councillor Melton, that way everybody's on the same level playing field. Um, and I'm assuming that's something that.
Yeah, I shared with the mayor this morning. So I was up early working on it so that Kelly could meet the deadline for publication today. Cause I know we've, you know, we've got the statutory requirements, but then there's also publication timelines that we have to deal with for the local newspapers. And so originally, I think she tried this week before last, and then, um, we got it that morning on, I think like the morning of Labor Day or the day after. I can't remember. But, um, so we were working. And I've not commented on the substance I shared with the mayor. I've shared that with Kelly and Amy Noonan as well, because I, they, I don't, you know, I don't know the functionality that's needed within the department to be able to deliver, you know, those reports and other necessary items. And I know Tim Berry's looked at it as well and kind of indicated that he feels comfortable with a deliverable language, but just making sure we have the process correctly. So, um, I've shared and I can share with, um, you all in writing as well, but I've shared with council leadership that we weren't comfortable with the original process that was being used because there's sort of different statutes in the procurement law. One deals with special, special purchasing that allows you to basically, you know, only solicit one vendor for certain software services and supports. But there's an underlying premise when you use that statute that basically states, you know, you have to be, um, driving towards competition. And if more than one, uh, you know, software vendor or support vendor can.
It's a state statute?
Yes, it is. It's in special purchasing 52210. Um, that if you have more than one, then, you know, obviously you really shouldn't use that statute. We know there's more than one vendor. In talking with Tim and others, um, there appears to be about six or seven companies that really deal with financial systems and supports for municipal governments in Indiana. So you're dealing with a somewhat limited universe. And one of those includes our current vendor. Um, so you knock that one out. You've probably got six or so, you know, solid potential vendors that would provide these kinds of services to the town. The original, um, process that the mayor was talking about, there are special purchasing requirements that if you're under certain thresholds, you can use these alternative to an RFP process. Although we didn't feel comfortable that that was correctly being used. Or, um, you have to solicit three invitations or bids. One of them that was in that bucket was open gov, which we don't feel is appropriate. That's not three. We're not going to consider that one. So, um, you know, we went through that statute. We're now working through an RFP process which delineates certain requirements and has certain timeframes. And so I think, you know, Mayor, to your point, every, you know, our focus should be on getting the best vendor in, um, being able to transition that as quickly as possible. So that is a priority, I know, for council leadership as well. And one that's been given to me to be, you know, as helpful as possible on. So, I mean, there are other issues, you know, related to the current vendor and timelines and information known or not known. But I think we're working with Kelly and her team to try to shore up this new RFP, get that out the door as quickly as possible so that the responses can be reviewed and hopefully the council can be part of that discussion.
So who's gonna review those? Do we have an idea?
It'll be the, it will be the, um, administration.
So not the finance committee that you put together?
We do intend to involve the finance committee, absolutely.
It's pretty important since that's their role.
Yes. Well, it, it's part of what the process is that we laid out, that we would take that to the finance committee.
And how often has the finance committee met?
Twice.
That's all.
Is that right? Or is it more than that? How many times? So maybe I've only attended two of them. I.
How many of you attended, councillor Trailer?
I think I've attended three in total. One last year and then, or maybe it was early this year, but three, three in total.
Either way, I'm on board. I really want to get somebody that knows what's going on with our financials in place. So we can be as clear and concise with the public.
Great.
And how we move forward. So thank you for all your help, Heather, on the, uh, getting the RFP fine tuned so we can get it out. Hopefully we can get it out today. Is that?
Yes, that's Kelly's goal. They have a noon publication deadline and, and I've redlined it so that she can go through quickly and decide what to accept or not accept so that they can get it out the door. I think that is everyone's goal is to have it out today, ours included. So.
If I could make a request regarding our prior vendor, I believe it's Boyce, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Kelly, is that Boyce that was our prior vendor?
For Keystone.
The first one. Keystone.
Yes.
Now, Boyce, yeah.
So if the consideration is to go back to them, I think it would be good for council to also know what are the improvements that they've made? Because we're now going back to a system, as we stated before, and I think there was some, uh, loose explanation given on, on some of the improvement, that they've made improvements, have a new, new oversight, um, umbrella organization. But it, it would be good for all of us to know what are those improvements. And maybe some of them we won't understand, but I think.
I think it might be appropriate for us to give you a, a presentation by the company that we do choose. And they'll be able to lay all of that out for, for everyone.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we'll make sure that gets, we'll make sure that happens.
Thank you.
You bet.
Very good.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, up next is the town council update. Are there any updates from councillors? We've got a couple of things to run through if nobody else does.
So the, um, Public Safety Task Force, and thank you, uh, Dr., uh, councillor Garrett and councillor Burke have, and especially councillor Garrett have done a yeoman's work on pushing that forward. Um, I think we're moving, meeting with the last of the stakeholders here soon. And so we will come back with a compilation of what we have found. And the next steps after that would be any recommendations after looking at best practices around the other communities in the country that have done this similar kind of work. So that's one thing. Um, if I could make a request, councillor Plunkett, President Plunkett, um, Kelly, we, at the last presentation of the budget, um, I had asked for a detailed report of the capital expenditures, um, that would be, that's on the budget, uh, that we might consider as to be one-time expenditures that we can apply, you know, as a justification for spending down the reserve. So, um, just a reminder again that.
Kelly, I'm, I'm sorry. Can you come up here? I know how much you love coming up here and talking.
Good morning. Um, so the list of, um, the list of the capital projects was actually in the document that I sent out. Councillor Trailer had asked a dozen or so questions about the budget. And, um, I sent the response out to the whole council, um, in hopes just to, um, answer any questions that maybe, um, others had had before our meeting on Thursday evening. So that list is in there.
Thank you very much. I missed that.
No, it's okay. I didn't, um, I didn't, I should have specified, but yeah, it's in there.
Okay. Thank you. And Kelly, is there, um, are we gonna be able to get an electronic version of this? I know we.
Oh, yeah. And I, I've talked to Tim about it. I'm actually making one myself. So I will have one to you here very quickly.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I just had a question, and I don't know if there's an answer to it or not. But, uh, with all of the findings in the, in the state board of account audit, um, one was suggesting that we go further into an investigation. Is there any movement on that? Or I know we, we can't sign a contract. So I don't know how we move forward on that.
Yeah, Heather and I have actually been in communication with, um, with some folks about what that looks like and, and how we may be able to, um, lean into their recommendation for an investigation. So that's certainly something that we're, we're tracking down.
Thank you.
Um, just briefly, I want to remind the public, obviously, as we've, as Kelly just mentioned, we have our budget meeting on 9/22. Um, and that's certainly something that I look forward to having the public engaged in. Um, we, we have had discussions. Heather and I are in the process of, of, um, and councillor Burke, or vice president Burke, specific to redistricting, that's something that is a town council initiative that would have to be done by the end of the year. And we are working on that. We're obviously a little bit time crunched right now, the next couple of months. So, um, on 10/25, I wanted to announce on October 25th, and obviously all councillors are welcome to, to attend this, um, I'll be hosting a, an ARPA meeting here in town council chambers. Um, Heather will be here to help talk about the legalities of what we can and can't do with ARPA money. I think it's important, as we've talked about in the past, to make sure that we get input from the community. We've heard from the chamber. We've heard from Z-Works. We've heard from other folks that have interest. Um, and, you know, there, there are some parameters associated with how we can spend that money. Um, as we've talked about when this first came out, we're required to have an ARPA plan for this spending. And, um, that currently doesn't exist. So I think it's important to get this input from the community to make sure that we can put an ARPA plan in place and figure out where these, where the taxpayers want their money to go. So, um, Amy, I would imagine we might have to post, uh, because of the possibility of a quorum for that.
Right.
So.
Yes.
President Plunkett, what, what was the date and time of?
It's gonna be October 25th. Um, and I think, I think we're gonna block out between six and nine. I mean, it's a long stretch. I don't know how much participation we actually will receive, but, um, depending on, you know, what that response is, we may have a follow-up meeting for that as well. Um, just to make sure we can get everything in. So. Uh, anything else from councillors? Up next is old business, and there is no old business. Moving on to new business, uh, there's one item, a consideration of approval of Zionsville Volunteer Fire Department Final Asset Distribution Letter to the town, uh, town of Zionsville. This is, and Heather, I'm gonna lean into you, and I know Jeff's in the back. I don't know if he wants to come up and say anything, but, uh, obviously this is something we've worked on for a few years, just the, the asset transfer and, um, you know, that transition from volunteer fire department. We don't have the account set up to accept the assets. That's something we'll do at the next meeting. Um, however, this is, this is one of two final steps to approve the, the letter, correct, Heather?
Correct. Yes. So you may recall, um, the mayor's team, and we also provided input back in October of 2021, worked on, um, putting in place an agreement with the Zionsville Fire Volunteer Fire Department about them winding down their services and then transferring their final assets to the town of Zionsville. Um, this is something that had already been signed and executed, but there is a process by which they have to follow statutorily. So all that's being requested today is that the town council vests the authority and, um, president Plunkett to sign that agreement. The mayor will also have to sign that agreement. And then as, um, president Plunkett noted, we'll be working with Kelly and the finance team because we'll need to establish a fund. Um, that will be a specific fund in which those, uh, assets will be receipted. Uh, so that'll be something we'll bring back. But this is, um, we're not, this is just vesting the authority in the town council president so that we can complete that piece and then start working on, uh, the fund transfer. And again, the mayor has to sign as well as, uh, president Plunkett as the town council president.
Heather, when can we do that? It seems like a fairly simple.
Yeah, it is, um, we'll be, we'll have the fund, I think, back at the next meeting. So, um, once that's set up, then they'll just be signing the agreement and then start transferring the, uh, final assets once that, um, fund is established.
So you just, maybe the next meeting we pass that?
We should be able to complete it, you know, by the end of September or, or mid-October. I guess our next meeting is October 2nd.
Yeah. Okay.
Heather, how long will the, the volunteer fire department continue to operate, I guess, at its location?
Um, I would have to, yep. I'll see, phone a friend.
Maybe, uh, the chief could come up as well. I have a, I have a concurrent question for you as well. Uh, Jeff Beam, I'm the treasurer for the volunteer fire department, uh, corporation. To answer you specifically, to answer your question, the volunteer corporation no longer exists.
Okay.
It has not existed since February of 21, if I remember correctly. I, the, all the years kind of, kind of flow together here after a while. But, uh, since February of 21 was actually our dissolution. So it has not functioned since then. So, so the, the actual fire department over in Perry Township no longer functions? No, this is the Zionsville Volunteer. The Volunteer. The Perry Township Volunteer Fire Department, which I think you're alluding to, still does, still functions. Okay, great. Excuse me. I, I got those mixed up. I appreciate it. And that was my follow-up question. So I just want to make sure that the Perry residents continue to have fire service and enough fire service. enough fire service.
You're correct, two separate organizations.
Thank you.
And if I, if I can, just a moment. With relationship to this asset, final asset distribution, the assets of the Volunteer Fire Department have all been transferred to the Town of Zionsville. That was done in November of 2021. We are, the only thing that we are trying to do now is, at that time, with that, those assets were distributed, you've already received $600,000 that you received somewhere.
Oh, that's, that's good to know, okay.
I don't know...
So, so just to be clear, and I know Kelly's new to her position too, just so we're clear, is it, are there any other financial assets being received or that's it?
The, the final financial asset is this $135,000 that is, that is left at work, that we had, that we had held for, for a time to make sure that we did not have any other liabilities that came up as a part of the dissolution. We're now trying to finalize and send off this final distribution, and that's what we're trying to accomplish now.
So that should be easy to find. Just go back to the minutes from that meeting and look at the fund that was established, and then can, can that fund accept these dollars as well?
I would say there was, I would, I shouldn't speak.
No.
So I think Kelly had something to say. She was giving us the high sign back there.
That's, when preparing for this meeting, that's exactly what I did. And what we found was that it, it had been noted in the meeting that a fund needed to be established. Internally, in finance, we established a fund, but we didn't do anything formally. So we realized that too late for this meeting. So that's why we will have it at the next meeting. But I went through everything, everything looks good. It is in a separate fund, but we just need to establish that formally in front of the town council at the next meeting.
So that, so that money's there. It's not floating around anywhere.
No, it's all there.
So that's there, and to your point, it just needs to be finalized specific to this.
Yeah, we just didn't realize that until...
Yeah.
Late last week.
All right, thank you.
There be some definition of what that fund is restricted to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I believe it was also in the agreement that was signed by the parties back in October, and we could probably find that agreement and recirculate it to the council, just so it's fresh in your mind. I know there also, I think it was also in the packet, right, Amy? Because that, it was all included, I think, in those packet of documents, now that I'd say that, so.
Yes, it was.
Cool. Thank you. Are there any other questions or anything for councilors?
No, I just want to thank everybody that was involved in that organization because I think it brought some good opportunities to the Town of Zionsville and its fire department over the years. So thank you, Jeff, and everybody involved.
Do we need to make a motion then?
Yeah, I think we probably just need to make, what type of motion?
Yeah, just a motion to vest the authority in President Plunkett to sign the final asset distribution letter on behalf of the town council.
I'll second Heather's motion. I'll make a motion to allow President Plunkett to have that authority to sign on behalf of the town council.
First by Counselor Garrett, second by Vice President Burke. All those in favor, second by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, six in favor, zero opposed. Up next is other matters. Are there any other matters from councilors?
Just, just to be clear, so at the next meeting then we'll formally establish that fund, is that, so you've got the authority to sign the letter, we just don't have the official fund, but it's...
Right.
All right, I follow.
Yep. And I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second by Counselor Garrett. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, six in favor, zero opposed. The next regular town council meeting is scheduled for October 3rd, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in Zionsville Town Hall Council Chambers. Final notice will be posted in compliance with the Indiana Open Door Law. Thanks so much.